Good evening, everyone. Love to see this full house tonight. This is a really good thing. There's a lot of good things on our agenda. I'd like to welcome you all to the Kent City Council Meeting for June 17th, 2025. If you could please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands unafraid, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Melissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Ralph.
Here.
Council President Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Michaud.
Here.
And Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes this evening?
No changes from staff, Your Honor.
All right, then. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the agenda stands as published. We're going to move right into public communications. We have several items this evening. The first item is the proclamation for Juneteenth. So this afternoon at 3:30, along with Councilmember Michaud, Boyd, and Fincher, we raised the Juneteenth flag out on the plaza. City staff members and members from KABAC were here to do that. We presented the proclamation for Juneteenth at that time. I am going to go ahead and still read it. So it's on the record. And then, under community events, I'll have Gwen Allen Carsten come up and talk to us about the Juneteenth celebration that's coming up. So I'm going to start. Like I said, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas, on New Year's Day, January 1st, 1863, using his war powers as president, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then, thenceforth, and forever free. And whereas almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery. And whereas the story and influence of James Edward Shepperson, who settled in Roslin, Washington in 1888, inspired many others to flee the South and at great risk and pursue new opportunities in Washington State as miners. And whereas we think about the moment in 1888 when 300 black men from Virginia, North Carolina, and Kentucky were determined to escape the terrorism of the post-Civil War South as they boarded trains for Washington Territory and settled in King County mining camps. And whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical and cultural readings. And whereas we acknowledge black freedom and achievements within this community, we would specifically like to recognize and offer thanks to Kent Black Action Commission for their founding and continued work in observance of Juneteenth and are grateful for their contribution to our city. And whereas we appreciate the black experience and celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities. And whereas we commit to working together to achieve equity for all, now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, to be Juneteenth in the City of Kent, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the celebration." So that proclamation was presented to KABAC this afternoon. And again, under community events, we are going to hear a little bit about the celebration and the history of that here in the city. All right. The next proclamation that we have this evening is recognizing the 135th anniversary of Verity Lodge. And I'm going to ask our very own City of Kent employee Dustin Veelen to come up. Well, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, then we'll do some photos, and I'll have you say a few words. So the proclamation says, "Whereas, Verity Lodge, located in the heart of Kent, Washington, has been a steadfast pillar of community, fellowship, and service since its founding in the year 1890. And whereas, for 135 years, Verity Lodge has upheld the values of integrity, charity, and brotherhood, nurturing generations of members and enriching the lives of countless individuals throughout the region. And whereas, the Lodge has stood not only as a meeting place but as a beacon of tradition, civic responsibility, and unity, demonstrating time and again its unwavering commitment to the betterment of both its members and the greater Kent community. And whereas, the historic milestone is a testament to the enduring strength, vision, and dedication of all those who have walked through its doors, built its legacy, and carried its mission forward. And whereas, on this day of celebration, we honor the past, celebrate the present, and look ahead to the future of continued service, friendship, and light. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim that on this day, June 17th, 2025, as we gather in fellowship and gratitude, we officially recognize and celebrate the 135th anniversary of Verity Lodge in Kent, Washington. May this forthcoming ribbon cutting mark not only the opening of a new chapter but also the recommitment to the values that have sustained Verity Lodge through the decades." So I'm going to let Dustin talk a little bit about it, but it is absolutely a gathering place that every single person in this room has driven by, probably been to events at, and we're really, really grateful for the continued support of the community.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
We're going to do a quick picture. You want to have the members come in?
Yeah, actually.
It's hard to take a picture when you're taking a picture.
I'm able to do this one.
You want me to take a picture?
Don't be shy. Come on and kill it in the space here.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
One of them is hiding in the corner there. That's what the whole is or what? Excuse me! Thank you, ma'am. Give you one more. One more. Perfect. Nice. Thank you.
I originally was going to have our worshipful master do this, and then he delegated. Like work. So Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, and fellow residents of Kent, it is a privilege to stand before you this evening on behalf of Verity Lodge Number 59 as we mark a remarkable milestone, our 135th anniversary. In May of 1890, the City of Kent was officially incorporated. Just one month later, Verity Lodge received its charter. Since that time, our histories have been deeply intertwined. Aaron Vandy Vanner, Kent's first mayor, went on to serve as master of our lodge in 1898. In fact, many of Kent's early civic leaders, business owners, and community builders were also brothers of Verity Lodge. I'm going to jump out of this real quick, but if you take a drive up through Hillcrest Cemetery one of these days, you'll see many of Kent's early civic leaders there, and you will also see on their tombstones, many of them will have a square encompass signifying that they were Freemason. For the past 135 years, Verity Lodge has united men of character and principle, men committed to using the timeless tools of Freemasonry to better themselves and serve their communities. We are proud of our legacy here in Kent, and we are deeply honored by this proclamation, recognizing our service and history. On behalf of our members, thank you for this recognition. We look forward with hope and purpose that the light of Freemasonry will continue to shine in Kent for generations to come. So once again, thank you very much. Many of you may have driven past our lodge. If you drive up Canyon, you have. We're right next to the Kent Historical Museum. That's not our original meeting place here in Kent. Originally, we actually met down on Second and SAR across the street from where the Lutheran churches, which I believe now is an empty parking lot. And they started to meet back there when it was the Hall of the Odd Fellows. We eventually bought it from them and were there until the 1960s when they switched over to this other building. But yeah, we've been around for a long time here in Kent. We've helped. The city found itself. We've helped the city grow over the years. And we're always looking for good men that want to help their community and help themselves and help their families be better. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dustin. All right. The next item under public recognition is the presentation of our Charitable Contributions Committee donation to Sound Generations. I am so very, very proud of the work that our city employees do. They really embrace the value of giving back to the community that gives to them, the community that they work in and that supports us all here at the City of Kent. So I am going to turn it over to Carrie Indicott, our HR Director, to talk a little bit about the donation and the committee.
Yes, thank you. So the committee is our Kent Employee Charity Committee, and we usually have two fundraiser events that happen. This event was our spring fling, and what we do is we purchase flowers and flats of flower baskets for the Mother's Day weekend for our staff to purchase and provide them to them, and we get a donation out of that. We also do a few other things with selling of car wash tickets and things like that. We were able to raise $1,750, and the amount is being donated to Sound Generations Meals on Wheels. So I've had Brittany Blue join us, and she'll have a few words to share about her charity.
Thank you. Thank you, City of Kent. This gift means so much. Sound Generations is one of the largest nonprofits in King County, serving older adults and really making sure they have a lifeline of support across four pillars of services from food security, transportation, health and wellness, and assistance services. And so gifts like this really go a long way in helping to make sure that older adults are not just seen and heard and connected, but they start to feel a sense of belonging. Far too often, older adults are written off. People don't understand that it's really a second lease on life, and so these gifts really help make sure that we can continue to support the increased demand that is that we're continuing to see across older adults in King County. So thank you, City of Kent. Thank you all. Really appreciate the support.
Thank you. Yep, we'll come out and... All right. Yep.
Thank you.
Those big checks are really fun, but it is way nicer to have the real one that the bank will actually do something with. So I just want to say thank you to City of Kent employees and to our charitable giving committee for the amazing work that you do and, again, really just finding ways to support the community. Sound Generations does incredible work in the city. Meals on Wheels is the program that comes to mind, and it really is a lifeline for many of our seniors. So thank you so much. All right. Okay. That brings us down to community events. And as promised, I would like to call up Gwen Allen Carsten, the Executive Director of KABAC, to talk a little bit about, or a lot about, I'll leave it up to you, about the upcoming event this Saturday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Councilmembers. It's a wonderful thing to be here and to the audience. Juneteenth is a time of remembrance. It's a time of looking forward, and it's a time of coming together. Today, we were honored as well to accept the proclamation for Juneteenth from King County, and that was a very nice surprise for us. We hadn't expected that. So, but we made it back out here on time to do the proclamation and the flag raising outside. I hope you guys have taken a look out there, but everything went well. So I'd just like to read a few words, just so we can have something else to help us understand what Juneteenth is all about. It is an honor to stand before you today and accept the Juneteenth proclamation on behalf of Kent Black Action Commission and the many individuals and families we serve in the City of Kent and across South King County. We started Juneteenth in the year 2011, when we were just coming on the scene as an organization. Had no idea what we were doing, but we figured something out. One of our most fondest members of our group, Linda Sweezer, she was taken from us in 2017, but she was the one who asked us or told us, "We need to do a Juneteenth." And she kind of said it like that, too. But she said, "We need to do a Juneteenth." None of us at that time had experienced Juneteenth. I, for one, I came from Florida, never heard of Juneteenth. But we had one member, Ms. Charmaine Boston, who came from Texas, and she made us aware that in Texas, I don't care whether it falls on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, if it's the 19th, we're taking that day off and we're celebrating Juneteenth. So she was a catalyst for us to just get in there and get it done with all of the ideas that she had. Juneteenth marks a powerful moment in American history. As been said already, on June 19th, 1865, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation, Union troops arrived in Galveston, Texas to inform the last remaining enslaved African Americans that they were free. Now, there were some, you know, owners who had slaves. They were thinking economically. They got to get that last crop out. They got to make some money. So they did not adhere to what the president had said. So he had to send a special troop. Colonel Granger took the message to be relayed to those who are still holding on to the enslaved that they must let them go. Though their freedom had been declared on paper, it was not made real until long after. This day, born of delay, hope, and perseverance, reminds us how far we've come and how far we still have to go. Juneteenth is not just a commemoration of history, it is a living call to action, a reminder that justice delayed must never mean justice denied, and that equity must be more than a policy, it must be a lived experience. At KABAC, which I have been fortunate to be the Executive Director all of this time, I'm very proud of that, we embrace that call. We work year-round to address disparities and create opportunities for black residents in Kent. From our annual Juneteenth celebration to our civic engagement Action Up meetings, from youth leadership programs to participation in Black Legislative Day in Olympia, we are committed to creating space for education, empowerment, and change. Our work is rooted in community, guided by history, and driven by the future. We know that freedom is not just about the absence of bondage, but the presence of dignity, voice, and opportunity. We thank King County, and we thank Mayor Ralph and all our council members, all of our department members, our Kent Parks Department, for all the support that has been given to us over these years. I want to honor our elders who kept these stories alive, our youth who are writing new chapters, and our coalition of community members and allies who believe in this shared work. Let us continue the legacy of Juneteenth with courage and clarity. Let us walk in the footsteps of those who came before us and leave a stronger foundation for those who will follow. Freedom was delayed, but never denied, and it will never be forgotten. So with respect to that, on June 21st, up at Moral Meadows Park on the East Hill, we will be celebrating our 14th Annual Juneteenth Event. Public is welcome to come out and take part in what we have going on. We have some new vendors, we have some new service organizations, and one in particular I'd like to mention, if you know of anyone who is in need of an immunization and they can't afford it or whatever the case may be, we have something called the Care-A-Van, and it's an immunization piece where if you need that, they will gladly help you get that. So that's something that we're really proud of. Not, we don't just celebrate having fun, we want to make sure that some of the needs for the community are met. And so we are grateful for the anchor group, is the name of the association that that's coming from. And again, we're going to have free food, going to be a taste, not a hole to make you sleepy, but just a little bit of something. We have a new food truck coming. It's called Fusion, Soul Fusion, and they're actually over in Bellevue. And it was just by happenstance that I read into that vendor, and he's delighted. They are so happy to come. One of the main attractions we're going to have this year is our processional, which will be led by our Buffalo Soldiers. They will be on their horses with their flags, and the community is always welcome to come and join in as we march from one place in the park all the way up to where the ceremonies and all that's going to take place. So it's going to be a great day. It's going to be a day of coming together. It's going to be a day of thankfulness, and we're going to have fun. The kids will have things to do, and I would just like to commend the Kent Parks Department for the way that the Moral Meadows has shaped up. It's really nice up there, and we want to make sure we take full advantage. And by the last time, we did not have a basketball tournament, we got a three-on-three tournament going on. So we've made some really, you know, some monumental steps, if you will, trying to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to enjoy this day. So again, I invite you to come on out. I hope I can see you guys there. If I'm running around like a chicken with its head cut off, that's what I do. But we get the job done. So please, feel free to come out, have a good time, and as I said earlier, outside, we're going to be doing them boots on the ground. Everybody knows what boots on the ground is? Yes? We're going to be doing the boots on the ground. So get ready, bring your boots, and we got a fan for you. Thank you so much. I appreciate you, Mayor. Appreciate all of our council members. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Gwen. All right. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you. Looking forward to that Juneteenth celebration on Saturday. Along with that, I'll be sharing events at the Sessos Showware Center. I'm sure a lot of us in this room have been to Sessos Showware Center. This past weekend, there was a lot of graduations happening for my Kent schools. So it's a great place to be that brings us all together, and it helps boost our economy and brings us lots of, I guess, Kent Station brings a lot of business. With that, I'm going to share the events that are happening on June 21st and 25th. AEW presents Collision and Dynamite. On July 15th, there'll be Baby Metal, and on July 17th, Cody Jinx Hippies and Cowboys Tour. And August 17th, in Pacific Cascade, Mustang Club, all Ford Show, which seems exciting. And if you haven't been to Showware Center, you can buy the tickets and see all the upcoming events at assessashowwarecenter.com. And with that, back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On July 9th, we kick off the summer concert series here in Kent. So that means you have probably about six weeks all the way till almost mid-August to take advantage of three, three different concerts, some are for kids, but families are welcome at all of them. These are concerts that, there's all sorts. There's rock, there's soul, there's pop, there's country music, there's whatever kind of music you like, there's going to be some there. And they have special shows for kids, musicians and magicians and different things. So take advantage of that. It's going to be great fun. Give the kids who are out of school something to do, and that starts, you can look online, mykentparks.com, you can find the schedule there, or just go to the webpage of kentwa.gov, and you can look at the calendar. Tomorrow, we have Dr. Terrence Roberts, who's going to be 6:30 to 7:30 over at Kent Commons in the Crystal Mountain Room, and he was one of the Little Rock Nine. So he's a Congressional Gold Medal of Honor winner. He has won numerous awards, and he was one of the nine students who, over 1,000... was one of the nine students who, over a thousand people tried to keep out of school on segregation, or due to segregation. Federal trips were sent in, they were there for the school year to make sure that those nine kids could be educated in the school, and you'll hear all about his story tomorrow, 6:30 PM, if you show up over at Kent Commons. And then, you heard about the 14th Annual Kent Black Action Juneteenth Celebration in honor of Linda Sweezer. I just wanna slide in there that it was in 1890, thanks to the Sons of Enterprise and Pauline and William Scott, that the very first Juneteenth Celebration was held here in Kent. So quite a while ago, and glad that it's back and running a string, we can get another one all the way out to 2099. Thank you very much, that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, that concludes our community events, and we're gonna move on in the agenda to our public safety report, and Chief Padilla will be joining us this evening.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Councils, my pleasure to bring the report for June, and we've got good stuff on order here. We'll start with some swearing-ins. We have one new corrections officer and one new entry-level police officer to swear in tonight, and I would like to call upon Corrections Officer Terrance Pre-Cleare and Officer Aldo Mendoza Chavez, please come forward and do that awkward thing we talked about where you turn your back to the council mayor? And face the TV for our viewers at home. All right. So I'll tell you a little bit about their background, starting with Corrections Officer Cleare. She was born here in Washington State and has lived here all her life. Her education is that she has a degree in respiratory therapy, which she, I think, started to utilize, but has always realized that she wanted to do law enforcement in the medical field wasn't her jam, I think we talked about earlier. When we asked her why she chose Kent, she noted that she chose Kent because of how fast-paced we are here in the city, that is true, and then how great the culture is in terms of our workforce. She also liked how the department always has room for growth, and one of the draws for her here is that we have the Corrections Officer-to-Petrol Officer Program, which she has expressed early on very strong interest in. Sorry, Commander Armstrong. That's our joke, Commander. Her interest includes that she loves traveling, experiencing new cultures and places. She also likes hiking, swimming, baking, and reading. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Corrections Officer Terrance Pre-Cleare. Officer Cleare, I understand you have some family, friends in the audience, would you like to introduce who's here for you?
So with me today are both my parents, I'm your cousin, Man Joe, and my older brother, Man Pete, and my aunt is also here, she's also a corrections officer.
Alex, you're meant at the graduation. Well, welcome, thank you for being here, that support's important. All right, transitioning over to our new officer, Officer Aldo Mendoza Chavez. He is, was born in Pacific, and raised in the Pacific Northwest, but his family roots are from Mexico. His education is that he's a first-generation college graduate, and has earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice at the University of Washington, I have to say it, go Ducks. Before Kent, he was a long-haul truck driver, traveling up and down the western half of the United States, delivering anything and everything that can be placed on a step-deck trailer. Since I don't know what that is, and I'm guessing there's others, Officer Mendoza, what is that?
It's like a platform, except there's an elevated platform at the closest part to the actual tractor.
You can carry higher load, that's what it is. Okay, carry the big stuff, the people that block traffic, that's what you're saying? Okay, good. All right, very good. When we asked about why he chose Kent, he says because of the good impressions he had with the agency through our social media presence and participation in the Community Police Academy, he put himself in the Community Police Academy, which is very good. He noted that he's been working to achieve the goal of being a law enforcement since he started high school. Interest are, he wrote here that during the winter, you'll find him on the mountains, snowboarding the majority of the time, aside from that, he'll catch him watching some sort of Star Wars movie or series with his girlfriend. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Officer Aldo Mendoza Chavez. Officer Chavez, do you have family and friends you want to introduce?
Yes, so over here we have my father, Gabriel, and my mom, Marcela, and then I have my girlfriend, Sam, my cousin, Esmeralda, sister, Alundra, and in the back, I have my girlfriend's family, her brother and his family as well.
Great, welcome, thank you for being here, appreciate that. All right, with that, I'm gonna have to call upon Mayor Ralph to please do the honors.
If you could raise your right hand, and I'll keep up for me. I say your name.
Hi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
The state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
And the city of Kent.
And the city of Kent.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will obey the laws and regulations.
And that I will obey the rules and regulations.
Of the Kent Police Department. Family can come up here and take, please come on up and take, yeah.
Get in tight, get in tight. Down the front row, come on, get in. Come on! It's too late now, it's all right. We won't know whose family's who, but, no problem. Okay, well, transition, next slide, please, Melissa. All right, again, like I say every year, don't kill the messenger. So, with 4th of July approaching, wanted to remind everyone that all forms of personal fireworks are illegal in the city of Kent. I also want to remind everybody that City Code 1305 prohibits fireworks, and that was adopted by voters back in 2015. So now that we got that out of the way, I have my vest on, we're good. As with every year, we're asking that you not call 911 to report general fireworks that don't have an immediate public safety risk. We are asking that if you have a fireworks complaint because there's violations going on, please call the non-emergency line at 253-852-2121, and we will get to as many of those complaints as we can. The reality is, we will probably have several hundred calls for fireworks complaints at least, and I want to be very transparent like I do every year, we will get to as many of those calls as we can, we can't possibly get to all of them, and so please be patient. If you have a circumstance where someone is imminently endangering the public by their actions, we want those calls to go directly to 911, and we will respond in kind. Unfortunately, every year, we find ourselves having to make arrests for people engaging in very reckless behavior that's likely to cause fires, and that's really what we're talking about. We want to do everything we can to make it a safe environment, to make it a family environment, but if we find those situations, we will take enforcement action. We've called upon our staff, we have, little known fact, the officers are not allowed to take that day off if they're in the patrol division, so get ready, our new people, if you didn't know that. So we have double-staffed up, we will have emphasis cars out on patrol. Our hope is that we won't have to ruin somebody's 4th of July, but you guys get the circumstances and the risk. Violations, if you violate the law, the penalties for that can range from a civil fraction of $250 for minor violations, up to a gross misdemeanor punishable with 364 days in our beautiful Kent jail, and/or a fine of $5,000 for more serious violations. Okay, so there's the education piece. And then, officers have the authority, whether we arrest or not, to seize and dispose of fireworks, so we don't want to have to do that as a... Again, seeking voluntary compliance, we want everybody to have a great 4th of July, we want to continue our trend of being more safe every year. And so with that, next slide, please. Whoops, back to that slide, sorry, Melissa, too early. So, great alternative to personal fireworks, the city hosts an amazing 4th of July splash every year at Lake Meridian Park, we will be doing so again this year. The event hours for the actual festivals run from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Gates will open earlier than that, but shuttle service will start everybody to use the shuttle. Due to the growing number of attendees there, we have had to restrict parking at the park to disabled parking and first responders. Everyone else will not be allowed to park inside the park itself, and we're asking you to take shuttles. And there'll be, we have staff shuttles that should be somewhat seamless and easy to use for seeing the fireworks. The fireworks actually, the display itself actually starts at 10:00 PM. Leading up to that time, we'll have music, we'll have vendors and food, it has really become a really great, family-oriented event, and we encourage as many people from the city to go there and watch that wonderful display. So, as a reminder, we will be clearing everybody out of the park, consistent with City Code, and the gates will lock at midnight, and so that's the information you need to know. More information's on our park website as well, if you didn't catch all of that. Okay, next slide. Cornucopia Days, as usual, July, you know, we've got one event and then the next. Cornucopia Days is scheduled this year for July 11th through 13th, with the parade occurring on the 13th. And we've been engaged with Public Works, other city departments, the Lions Club, to facilitate another great event this year. We have staffed it up, we've brought in resources from our partnering agencies, and as we have seen recently, we think it's gonna be a great event, so we encourage everybody to go to that. We do want to give the public an early notice that on the 11th, in the afternoon, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact time, we will be doing road closures, and certain roads in our downtown core will remain closed throughout the festival. In addition to that, all of Fourth Avenue from Willa Street all the way over to James will be shut down most of the day on July 13th to facilitate the parade. So, heads up, plan accordingly, but I wanted to give everybody the information on that. And with that, Mayor, that completes this month's report, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Chief. Council, any questions for the chief? All right, not seeing any, thank you very much. All right, moving on, the next item on our agenda is reports, so each one of the council members that sits up here is also committing their time to representing Kent outside of just the council meeting, so representing us on a variety of regional and statewide committees. And the goal behind that is really to make sure that Kent's voice is being heard as policy decisions are being made, as grant decisions are being made, all of those types of things, making sure that our residents are well-represented. I'm gonna start with a few updates before I pass it along, so a couple of highlights in the last two weeks, Transportation Policy Board, I chair that committee at Puget Sound Regional Council, we are in the process of developing our 2026 through 2050 regional transportation plan. So that is a compilation of policy decisions, projects that will represent the major transportation and road projects in the four county region. As we are going through that, it is a financially constrained plan, meaning that there has to be funding sources available for, or planned for, the projects that are in the plan. Right now, as it stands with current law revenue, there is about a 21% gap in that multiple-billion-dollar plan. The thing that stood out to me most as we were talking through this presentation is about 45% of that gap is at the city and county level. So the majority consistently, or majority of the state-type projects are funded, transit, there's funding sources, but at the city level, we just don't have access to that type of revenue. So it's something that we are having conversation around and trying to make sure that those very important local projects are funded, and that includes maintenance projects. So how are we paying for the transportation system that exists? I will keep you updated, there's a variety of different proposals out there on funding sources, as you might be aware, the legislature just passed an increased gas tax, that will fill a portion of that gap, but something that is not overwhelmingly popular, so looking at different sources for transportation funding. I also attended the Economic Development District Board at Puget Sound Regional Council, we had a presentation around World Cup. If you have not heard, it is coming to the Seattle region in the upcoming year. A lot of economic development are opportunities, so the amount of money that will be coming into our region through tourism and those kinds of things, really working with the region on how do we capitalize on all of those people that'll be visiting the Puget Sound area. I do know that our own Kent Chamber is working with the Seattle Chamber and the World Cup Committee on ways that we can see, make sure that some of that revenue comes in the direction of Kent, so excited to hear about those plans moving forward. Last thing I want to report out on, we started our Summer Drinks in the Driveway Series, so it's an opportunity for neighborhoods to invite in the city to talk to them about the issues that are happening there, so the Ridgefield neighborhood was our first neighborhood. I was joined by our Public Works Director Chad Baron and Assistant Chief Jared Kazner, and we met with the neighbors and talked about the things that were on their mind, and as has been consistent for the last few years, public safety priority for the neighborhood, we had lots of questions around that, and then transportation, how are we, what are we doing when it comes to making sure that cars are slowing down and drivers are being more responsible? So grateful for their participation in the Drinks in the Driveway Series. With that, I'm gonna look to my right and pass it off to Pat Fitzpatrick, Executive Officer, Chief Administrative Officer, you got a new title tonight.
Hey, whatever, as long as I'm still here. All right, so just a quick update that we have, just a reminder, we have a special meeting of the council on Monday, June 30th, this is gonna replace the July 1st meeting. The committee, the whole meeting, will be held at 4 o'clock, and a full city council meeting will be held at 5:00. So just wanted to remind council and the public of that, and... So just wanted to remind council and the public of that, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have one meeting in between the last two weeks. I sit on Growth Management Policy Board, Puget Sound Regional Council, and we had our meeting two weeks ago. I'll have all the notes from that meeting in my council newsletter, and I'm heading to Association of Washington Cities Conference next week in person to be, to serve on the nominating committee, and I know my, I think Councilmember Troutner is going to be there as well next week. And I'm just going to say that a lot of pictures and a lot of events I attended in the last two weeks will be part of the council newsletter, so if you don't already subscribe, please go on the website and subscribe to that newsletter. And with that, I'm going to start with Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam President. I am Chair of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board. I am also on the Regional Transit Committee. Both those meetings are tomorrow. I did sit in for Councilmember Boyce at the Public Issues Committee, or PIC, meeting on June 11th. We talked at that meeting about bringing PIC back to what it used to be, where cities can bring things that they're working on and be supported by other cities to have a bigger voice, those 38 cities supporting all of the cities in our community when there's issues that are affecting one city or all of our cities. They are also going to come out with an SCA newsletter, so stay tuned for that. And then we had a presentation on the legislation that came out of this last session and what that means to cities. And Madam President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Counselor Michelle.
Thank you, Madam President. My updates are in the council newsletter, and a lot of things are happening in Kent right now as we approach summer. There are a lot of ribbon cuttings. Riverbend Bar and Grill is now open, we did a ribbon cutting there. And also, the mayor and I were at the ribbon cutting for the farmer's market, which is now open every Saturday, except for Cornucopia Day Saturday.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilwoman Almer, please.
Thank you, Council President. So I serve as the subject matter chair for Economic and Community Development, and earlier tonight during our committee of the whole, we had two topics. First, we reappointed Gray Caffner to his position on the Assistant of Showware Governing Board, called the Public Facilities District. So we're excited to welcome him to another four-year term. We also had a presentation from staff on the Recode Kent. There's two phases to this project. The first phase is what we're dealing with right now, which is really a reaction to the legislative mandates and getting our code up to speed with what happened, you know, what came out of this last legislative session. So those immediate ones that need to be voted on are going to be coming before us on June 30th, at that special meeting on that Monday. And then, you know, beyond that, there's sort of a phase two where we'll be dealing with the more detailed part of the code changes to the city of Kent. So more work to come on that. I also serve the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Board, and we had our group last Friday. We had a presentation from the King County Women's Advisory Board, which I was not even aware there was one, so that was kind of cool to learn about that. It was actually established in 1978, and they are the advisory group to the county executive and council on the needs and rights of women in the county. Their main focus topics this last year have been gender violence and then thriving and aging. So that was part of why they were coming to speak with us, is we were talking about the intersect between what we do and the Aging Advisory Council on aging in place, healthy aging in place, and what they do then also with thriving during age age for women, and especially knowing that women tend to live longer, that there's, you know, there's more issues there. So that was an interesting conversation to see where our services and the needs of the communities intersected. We also voted and agreed to sign onto the letter opposing some changes that the Public Energy Department is putting out. The public comment period closed yesterday, so it'll be interesting to see where this takes it, but there's a, they're revising a section, Section 504, which affects accessibility standards in new construction. So obviously, you know, that's very important to this advisory council. It's the accessibility standards for the physical buildings, so we wrote a letter asking for that to please be protected and have that exclusion taken out. And then finally, we just had a short conversation on anti-aging training for healthcare professionals, and something that's to be coming this year from one of our, the King County Department. So that was, it was good to hear that they're making efforts to train healthcare workers on anti-ages and anti-age bias, so. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Almer. Councilwoman Boyce, please.
Thank you, Madam President, and thanks, Tony, for stepping in for me in pit last week. I am the SME for Public Safety, doing operation. We had a presentation from our Chief of Police and from Comcast in Lumin field regarding the vandalism that had been going on within Comcast. How many have Comcast out there? Anybody? How many have lost your Comcast, right? And there's a reason why we have a lot of theft going on, a lot of vandalism going on, where people is going around and just stealing copper, which makes it hard. It's impacting some of our critical operation, like the 911. We got people who work from home, they can't actually work from home, Kent School District, there's so many people is being impacted by this here. So there's a partnership that have been developed with the Kent Police and Comcast to really try to get our arms around this here. But even with the partnership that we're going to have with the Kent Police Department, it's going to be up to us, like, if we see something, say something. And I'm assuming, Chief, do they dial 911? If they...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so please, if you see something, somebody doing some suspicious and like they shouldn't be, dial 911, because that's the only way we're going to get our arms around this here. So Comcast is putting some action in place to really try to get their arms around this here, and then, you know, with you, and then with the partnership with the KPD, KPD, excuse me, we're hopeful we can try to not stop this here, slow this down. So thank you very much, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Councilwoman Boyd, please.
Thank you, Council President. I also sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board and the Local Hazardous Waste Management Program Committee. And funny as it might sound, I had no meetings since the last council meeting, then we canceled both of them. And so what update I do have will be included in our newsletter, so if you are informed to read the newsletter, get a hold of it, read it, and that's the end of my meeting. Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Boyd. Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you very much, Council President. I also attended several ribbon cuttings and the restaurant openings, the Riverbend Bar and Grill. For Public Works tonight, we accepted grants, or in order for the city to accept money, we have to vote and actually be able to accept money, there are reasons for that. And so tonight, we did that. We are going to be, we are going to be able to continue with our waste reduction program, the waste management one, the one where cars show up. Over 1,000 cars recently showed up at one of our elementary schools, Canyon Ridge Elementary, bringing their recycling. And so those recycling programs, this one in particular, the grant is going to pay for staff time as well as all of the fees that go along with recycling and the convenience of having those separate events around the city. Also had a meeting, Seattle-King County Coalition on Homelessness, and there was two of the highest buckets for people who are homeless, are our seniors, are increasing in homelessness, our seniors and our youth, particularly those up to about 25 years of age, so young adults, about 18 to 25 years of age. And so there is more information, oh, and Arts Commission, that there are notes on that in there too, as well as King Conservation District and the report we have. So just take a look at the council reports, and there's a lot of good information there, and expands on what we've talked about.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. As my colleagues mentioned, and I'm going to say it again, council newsletter, that's where all this information and all the exciting pictures will be, so you don't want to miss out. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very, very much. All right, we are going to move on to, on the agenda. We do not have a public hearing tonight, but our next item is public comment. So the public comment period is your opportunity to speak to the council and mayor on issues that relate to the city of Kent or agenda items the council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using this public comment opportunity for political campaign purposes, including supporting or opposing a ballot measure or any candidate for public office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches but must instead speak to something concerning a matter that the city of Kent, that relates to the city of Kent. Further, in providing public comments, speakers must address the mayor and council as a whole, and remarks intended to target an individual on the dais are not permitted. Finally, please note that this public comment opportunity is for you to provide information to the mayor and the city council that you would like for us to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during the meeting itself. Melissa, can you please call our speakers?
Our first speaker is Todd Oyafesso.
Okay, as you make your way to the podium, once you get here, if you could state your name and city of residence for the record, and we do have a three-minute time limit, and that timer will be up on the screen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Todd Oyafesso. I'm a resident here in Kent, I'm on the Land Use and Planning Board for the city. And I just wanted to comment and stress my, how pleased I am with the Recode Kent efforts and how we are actually moving towards all of the goals that we've addressed and planned on in our comprehensive plan for 2044. We are seeing that we are making improvements towards housing and job capacity initiatives that we plan to see within the next 20 years, as well as placing a lot of emphasis on areas that are close to high-transit locations. So I just wanted to say that I'm pleased with what I'm seeing so far.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We could, yeah. Limit the applause, please.
Next, we have Mike Cor.
I've lived in Kent 70-some years, how's that? Heading south out of Kent, past Safeway Store, you go over the Green River Bridge. Immediately after, you'll go through a couple of curves. I live on one of those curves, and there has been, I can't tell you how many, but within the last three months, there's been two cars come through there. Evidently, when they leave Kent, they assume the road is going to be straight again, and they punch it, and they lose it on the corner, go through my fence, bust stuff up. And it's happened just two weeks, two, a couple months ago. And I set my four-by-four posts in concrete, doesn't matter, I don't know how the cars get even drive away, because they snap the post right off. I have to fix them, almost always happens at night. I don't know who they are, I don't get insurance. But what I'm looking for is perhaps a light, which I think is impossible, but a couple big yellow curves showing a curve as I had, to let these guys know this road's not straight, because I'm tired of fixing my fence. I've got other people here that live on that curve too, that have been hurt. There's one person got killed two years ago on the same curves, for the same reasons. What I'm hoping, I wrote a letter to John, no, Rob Brown, your transportation guy, and he's answered me, but they're very busy. So if I can, if I can get some yellow, big yellow signs out of the city with curves on, I'll even put them up myself, but I'd like to see a couple of curves put in. Most of the accidents come out of Kent, but there has been some coming around the other direction. So if I put two signs, one before the first curve, one before the second curve, they're not very far apart, and maybe also on the other side of the road, I think it'll maybe help, it's a safety issue. I think that's it.
Sir, I am going to direct you right there to the back, the gentleman that's waving his hand, that is our Public Works Director Chad Baron, and he is going to be your best connection, and if you want to chat with him, please feel free.
I shall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gwen Allen Carsten.
We did it under public recognition? Perfect.
And Logan Evans.
Hi, everyone, I'm Logan Evans. Nice to see you all again. So I really love what Bill Boyce had just said a moment ago about if you see it, say it, report it, that we all need to work together. One thing I, the only issue I've seen is that when I went on a ride-along, there's a general sense of impotence and kind of hopelessness in the people. A woman, a mother living at Lake Meridian, had posted on Nextdoor about how these people tossed a firework the other day, and it caught her trees on the fire, nearly burned her home down. And people said, "Why didn't you report it?" She goes, "Well, cops are too busy." And I've been with our police, I know how quick they respond to anything. But there's this sense of hopelessness, because I've seen that even when our police do show up, they're, and they behave so well, they're tied, their hands are tied so often, and even when they can book a person, they're let out so quickly. And where I'm coming to this is it feeds to my mind the copper wire issue as well. This was not an issue for us 10, 15 years ago, like, it just wasn't here, it was something we heard about happening in other countries. But again, there's this sense of what can be done. And while I think it's really wonderful to wait for the state to pass a law that would treat this as functionally an act of terrorism that damages core critical infrastructure, cutting off communications, it's also the state and county that have passed these laws that made this situation possible for us in the first place. So where I'm going with this is when you passed the soda, that was so amazing, it was actually a city effort on your guys' part that stopped a dangerous scenario that was keeping our children, our people, out of public spaces, and you dealt with it, and that's fantastic. And my question is, what laws can you guys do, or what can you make now that could help with this scenario? While we're waiting for the state to decide if they have the spirit to address an issue that harms our safety, can you guys make codes here? Again, even things about public intoxication on buses, or drug-addled kind of maniacs running through neighborhoods in their underwear, which I saw Friday night, the poor family, but these people who just feel so uninhibited that nothing can happen to them, they can't be touched by the police, can't be touched by the people either. And I think if you guys who have done this before can do something like that in this issue, it'll do so much for our city, instead of waiting for these other people above us to take something into their own hands. And then when that's done, then we can get back to things like developing the parts and making sure that there are enough swing sets for kids who want to use them. I mean, really, it's, those things are the beautiful things we should be worrying about, but it has to come after the crime. So again, that's just what I have to ask for you, is what laws can you guys do, even if you can do anything to help mitigate this situation? Anyhow, that's all. Thank you, everyone, really.
Thank you. That's it for speakers? All right, thank you, everyone, we appreciate your time this evening. Right, we are going to move on. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. It's a compilation of items that the council has considered at both workshop and committee of the whole. These items, the council's had an opportunity to discuss and shape the policy, ask questions, have them answered, and these have all passed out of committee of the whole without controversy. Tonight, we have items A through M. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right, we are going to move on tonight under Other Business. We have one item, it's a resolution directed... It's a resolution directing staff to take steps necessary to adopt a public safety tax. So council, if you will bear with me for a moment, I'm going to set this issue up, provide a little bit of background information, some of it that you are absolutely aware of, a lot of it for, for the public, before I turn it over to our city attorney for the presentation on the nuts and bolts of what we'll be talking about tonight. So I want to start with a thank you to all of you up here. For the last two years, you have voted unanimously to make our one and only legislative priority around funding for public safety. You've heard about it tonight in public comment, you've heard about public safety issues earlier during, during workshop. I know when I am out in the community, it is absolutely the number-one thing that people want to talk about. And council, you have made that commitment to look for a funding source to help with police staffing here in our city. So going, going back, sort of how did we get to the place where needing an additional revenue source was necessary? Streamline sales tax. We've talked about that as a, as a council for many, many years. So back in 2008, the state changed the way they sourced the sales tax, and that left a massive hole in the city of Kent's budget. We provide significant resources to the state's economy through the warehousing and industrial valley, and that used to generate revenue to our city. It no longer does. That revenue goes to other cities, and it created a significant gap. We've lobbied the legislature every, every way we know how to have them fix the harm that they have done to Kent and have been unable to get them to take any action. So that's sort of how we, how we got here. So sort of lay of the land, state of Washington, when it comes to public safety, we know that we have the lowest staffing in a police department per capita of any state in the country, including the District of Columbia. That means that we are 51st. That is not a good place to be last. The city of Kent in the state of Washington is at the bottom of that average. So we are, we are below average in the belowest of average categories, and that, we see that, we see that, we hear, we know that our police officers are only able to run from call to call to call to try and manage what's happening in our city, because at the end of the day, we are extremely understaffed. And again, council, you, you have acknowledged that to our residents, you've acknowledged it to the public, and committed to finding a resolution for that. So last year, we worked with Representative Chris Sterns and supported legislation that would allow, would have allowed the city, the city council, to councilmanically enact a three-tenths of 1% sales tax. That would have allowed us to hire about 35 police officers, which would have gotten us to average. Unfortunately, the legislature chose to not act on that request, did not even make it out of committee. We went back again this year, met with leadership in the legislature over the interim, asked for their advice, how do we, as a city, honor the thing that is the most important to our residents, and that is improve public safety, increase staffing in our police department? The request was made that we address this more holistically, not directing, just talking about public safety and police staffing. We were also asking for things like an increase to our co-responder program and community court, knowing that this has to be a holistic system. Leadership in the legislature said, "Come and talk to us about streamlined sales tax. Come and talk to us about the damage that was done to the city of Kent as a result of that." So we did. We spent hours and hours and hours in putting together presentations and videos and brochures and meeting with legislators, and we made, we made that pitch. Again, we had Representative Sterns and Senator Kaufman champion legislation for us. Again, the legislature said, "At the end of the day, this is not a priority for us." Very, very disheartening and very frustrating, because our residents deserve better, and our legislature is the one that controls that ability. What did pass this legislative session is House Bill 2015. So this is a companion to the grant money that many of you have heard the governor speak about, the $100 million for police staffing. I think one of the things I want to point out, that a $100 million grant is fantastic, but it is a grant, and it is not a responsible thing to do to hire people with grant money. It's, it's a great tool for one-time purchases for police vehicles or other types of capital investments, but it does not make sense. I, I know that, I've talked to a lot of our city employees, and they would like more than one paycheck. There's, in order to stay employed, they have, we have to be able to pay them on an ongoing, on an ongoing basis, and it is not fiscally responsible to hire with grant money. So there's that grant that's out there, and Tammy will talk a little bit about some of those requirements and what it'll take, but then there's also the ability for city councils and county government to pass a one-tenth of 1% sales tax. So that's one-third of what we, we know that we need to get ourselves up to average staffing. It does not solve the problem. It is a small step in that direction. Very frustrating, because we brought forward a tool, and we, again, collectively, the city council, all, all of you supported that as an ask. Where we are at today is, while it does not come close to solving our problem, it is a step, and I truly believe that if, as a city, we don't consider this, then when we talk to the legislature again about making the steps to actually solve the issues we have, we would be met with a, "You didn't use the tool that we gave you." So that is what we are bringing forward tonight for your consideration, is the beginning of this conversation. This is not a final vote, it is, it's the, it's the beginning step in, in the decision-making process about whether or not the council wants to utilize this initial tool that has been, has been provided to us. This is available to all, except to all cities and counties. The King County is also in conversations about leveraging a one-tenth for King County. The difference here is that what we are bringing to you is, will be in addition. We will be able to hire officers with this money. King County will be remaining status quo with that, that one-ten. Again, there's some frustration, the, the legislation that we asked for last year would have been shared revenue, so had the city leveraged it, the county would get a percentage of that, and our residents would still only be paying that same amount. Had the county leveraged it first, the city would have gotten revenue, and our residents would have still been being, still paid the same amount. Now there's a layering, and it is definitely concerning, I want, something I want you all to be aware of as we have this conversation. But again, this, this is a step towards the things that we have been telling the legislature that we need to be able to take care of our community, to hire additional police officers. I will tell you, I have been out for the last several years at every community space you can imagine and talking about this, and in, without exception, have received a, you know what, I'd be willing to pay that, that three pennies on a $10 purchase if it meant that there were police officers in my neighborhood, that the call-response time went down, that we felt safer as a community. So thank you for allowing me the time to provide that background. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Tammy to talk about the details of what's in front of you this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So council, tonight, and Mayor already kind of gave a little bit of an intro, but what you are not being asked to do tonight is to take action to actually impose the tax. So I want to make that abundantly clear, both for council, but also for the benefit of the public that are watching. What the resolution would do if you were to pass it tonight is it would authorize the mayor and staff through the mayor to take actions that would be needed to draft the ordinance, to bring it before you, to have a conversation at a later date about whether or not that's something you wish to impose. It would, though, also authorize the mayor to submit the documentation that we're required to submit to the Criminal Justice Training Commission, or CJTC, which is what I'm going to refer to it from now on, to establish that we're qualified to impose this tax. It's sort of one necessary step to imposing it. And it would also allow the mayor to apply for and accept grants, should we have the eligibility determined that we can do so. I'm going to talk about the state legislation at a high level. If any of you want any additional information about grant eligibility or eligibility to impose the tax, please reach out to me, and I'm happy to discuss it in certainly more detail. So the tax eligibility piece itself, first, the city has to be determined to be a qualified city, and what that means under the bill is that we must not have had a voter referendum, or, excuse me, a referendum, or a ballot measure that was rejected by voters to impose a sales tax within the past 12 months, which we've not had. So we're, we qualify as a qualified city. We must be eligible to apply for grants under the bill in order to impose this tax. So that's the one piece where the grant and the tax itself sort of overlap in that way, but it's really determining our eligibility to impose the tax. So for the grant eligibility piece, which ties into the tax again, there's 10 different things that we have to establish that we're eligible for. One is we've had to adopt policies and practices that are consistent with those adopted by the state attorney general's office on Keep Washington Working Act, use-of-force provisions, de-escalation, duty to intervene, all of things that the Kent Police Department has already done. We have to participate in CJTC training on de-escalation and mental health training. We have to implement use-of-force data collection and reporting requirements, and we're making steps on that as well. We also either have to receive existing sales tax funding under existing statutes, which we do, or we have to impose this tax. So there's a bunch of these 10 different things that we have to establish our eligibility for. That's the documentation that we need the mayor to be able to present to the CJTC for us to be able to bring an ordinance to you. So it's kind of, that's how it's intersected together. So once it's determined that we're eligible for the grant and therefore eligible to impose the tax, council must take action to impose the tax by June 30th of 2028. If action is not taken by that date, then it can only be imposed if it goes to, to the Revenue from the tax must be used for criminal justice purposes, and that is very broad, and that is a much broader use than what the grants can be used for. So under the grants, there's some very limited provisions of how that grant money can be used. That similarly does not apply over on the tax side. So, so long as it is related to criminal justice purposes, which is defined very broadly as activities that substantially assist the criminal justice system. So that would include law enforcement officers and funding their hiring, it would include other expenses related to the criminal justice system. So again, very broad use for the tax. Once the city does impose the tax, though, there is a reporting obligation within one year from that, and that is to the AWC, or Association of Washington Cities, of how we spend the money from that tax. And I don't know if you want me to get into any of the grant eligibility piece of it, but that's just at a super-high level. A lot of things that we're already doing, we already have a SEALIP program, we already have co-responder program, those are some of the things that get priorities under that grant funding, so we're unfortunately not going to be in a top priority position because we already do those things. But because we do have those programs in place, we would be in a second priority position for grant funding. Everybody else who has not taken those steps would be then in a third priority position. So super-high-level outline of sort of what the legislation does, but again, I'm happy to answer questions, but can also follow up with you individually later, too, if you want some more information.
Tammy, council president has a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Turn, press the button. Tammy, so who is in the first priority?
So the first priority position for the grant funding would be those who wish to establish a co-responder team or community immersion program.
Which we already have, so you're saying you don't...
Already done, so we've already been proactive in doing it, and so one way to look at it is we're sort of penalized in that way, where we took the proactive step to impose those in our jurisdictions, and because we did it, we've dropped down in priority level for that grant funding.
Thank you.
Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Tammy, for that really quick bit of information. So you said if we did impose this tax, it wouldn't have to go into place until June 30th of 2028?
That was, we just had this between, when this legislation takes effect, and this is, I'm sorry, I didn't explain this very well. So the legislation will take effect on July 27th of this year. So once it's effective, we have three years to act to impose it. We, though, can impose it at any time after it's effective and after our eligibility has been determined by CJTC. So once we've followed through some of the procedural things, we can take action to impose the tax. My understanding from talking with our finance department is there's some notification obligations to the state, I believe, that would, I think the soonest this could be imposed would be January 1 of 2026.
Okay, so then going back to something that you said, Mayor, was, you know, if we want to bring this back to the legislature as a priority, to ask for additional funding, to have this in place would be ideal, because, like you said, if we don't have this in place, they're going to look at that and say, you know, "Well, you don't need it, because you didn't act on it before." So obviously, very important to have that piece to be able to move forward with some of this additional request.
I think that is absolutely a concern. If there's a tool laid out that we did not utilize, then saying we need additional tools becomes a much more challenging conversation. Is that it, Tammy?
That's it. Thank you.
Right. Chief Padilla.
Is everybody thoroughly confused? I've read that law like three times, and I'm still, thank God for Tammy. So I, a lot of what I had prepared to say, the mayor said very well already. I do think it's important to reinforce and acknowledge that the mayor and this council has been stalwart in pursuing every avenue available to fund our law enforcement officers and increase our ranks. So I say that to say thanks, and I also think it's important to, for our community members to hear that there's been work going on, we just didn't show up with our hand out. Right? So appreciate that. Something I hadn't planned to talk on, Tammy, on the priority list, I've read that, and in the years working with the CJTC, there will be a lot of wrangling and determining and working with the law that, quite frankly, even to CJTC staff is confusing. This is not the first time we've got a bill where, where the CJTC has to figure out how to make it work, and I assure you, we will be advocating, because if you looked at the bill and the way that the grant part of this was written, they almost went and looked at the Kent Police Department's SOPs and operations and innovative programs and said, "We want departments to look like this." So to have that be something that may preclude us from grant funding is inherently fair, and I'm sure we'll have the opportunity for those discussions, we'll see how that goes. So I wanted to footnote that a little bit. So you guys have heard me multiple times over years talk about what the impacts have been on us being understaffed. And while this potential increase in staffing is not what we need, right, we've, you've heard us say 30 to 35 gets us to average in the state, I do want to say that we have an opportunity to make good, meaningful use of the positions if they are approved. And we've looked, and we've thought long and hard, we've listened to the community, the mayor can back me up on this, we hear over and over and over the same themes from our community as to what they want to see, and a lot of it is about what they don't see. A lot of it is about that they don't see patrol officers in their neighborhoods, they don't see officers doing patrol at their parks, questions about where is our bike unit? Do we have a bike unit anymore? And so have in mind that we've looked at this both from what we think at a professional level and doing law enforcement command, but also with a lot of integration and thought about what the community's been telling us they really want. So is that. The other preamble I want to get to before I go into details is that this is a proposal. There is, I want to really strongly, we have thought about it, but these are no final decisions, there's no outcomes. These are some concepts and some areas where I think with the limited opportunity in terms of the numbers, we can maximize the impact, because that's the goal. Whatever I'm going to get given to me from you, I'm going to maximize it. So that's kind of how we framed it, because what I think you'll find is questions like, "Well, why not this?" or "Why not that?" And I'll be happy to answer, but that's kind of the backdrop. How do we maximize what we have? All right? So challenges with the understaffing, this, this addresses two of several challenges. The first one is I've talked about us being a reactive state, and where we are really good at showing up after something's gone wrong, we're really good at picking up the pieces then, and then waiting for the next thing to happen. That is not the model we want, I think we all agree with that, and this gives us an opportunity to move the needle in a more proactive and preventative stance in terms of our providing law enforcement services. And then second, there are critical units that have not been staffed that are, that deal with serious and organized crime, heinous crimes, and I'm talking specifically about street-level drug trafficking and human trafficking. Okay, so this proposal has that important need in mind as well. Again, doesn't cover everything, it's not enough, but here's what we would do with it. So with that, the first thing we would look to staff is our bicycle-mounted patrol team. Everybody here knows them as SOU. The reality is, is we have several bike units and officer, and a sergeant. The reality is, is we have several bike units and officer or sergeant, but they're very rarely on their bikes, all right? We have them, due to need, we've engaged them over the years in completely working with our homeless community, doing camp cleanups and bringing services and outreach to our camps. What we would do here is bring on a team that would be solely focused on high-visibility patrols in our downtown core, speaking to the needs of our businesses, speaking to the needs of our residents downtown, speaking to the needs of the visible things that we see when people come into our downtown center. There is a huge call and a huge want to see bike patrol officers back. Bike patrol officers have the ability to be present, to be accessible, and to be able to directly communicate versus having someone in a patrol car. And as you know, when someone or our officers is in a patrol car, they're usually going somewhere, right? This would be dedicated to that. They would also be responsible to address the public transit station and the issues there and be available to be riding their bikes during major festivals like Colsta Day, Corn Days, and Fourth and July Splash, which we've been lacking for the past few years. So there's that. This add-up to the unit would be two officers and one sergeant. What we would do is take two officers from our current complement and make two teams of four officers with one sergeant total, okay? But to be clear, this would be an additional two officers and one sergeant, okay? Street-level narcotics team, human trafficking intervention team, it would be our next on the list here. This team would work through the investigations division to focus on street-level distribution of narcotics and human trafficking to fill the gap that we currently have with task force-level investigations and the overburdened work on our detectives that do major crimes, homicides, and whatnot. So the human trafficking element unit would enable us to do meaningful investigations, going after the perpetrators and the, basically, the pimps and going after them. We've had long history in going as far as away as Las Vegas and Arizona to go after these guys. They do incredible damage, they basically engage in horrible slave trade. It also gives the ability for us to go and do rescues of victims, which I think is the more important work. You have to have both, but we have had a track record with staff of being very successful in the state of having more victims rescued than anybody else. And I've said that before, and you can look it up. And then we also want to go after the people that buy sex, the Johns, and reignite our ability to do stings and do intervention there. So this combined effort with street-level introduction, right now, as you've heard me say, we either got cartel-level investigations or we've got users. We're not dealing with the people showing up to distribute the drugs in our city that are showing up at our parks, that are showing up at our homeless camps, that are showing up at our festivals, and this team would be deployed to do that and do it very well. The ask for this proposal would be three officers, actually, three sergeants, sorry, three detectives and one sergeant. The next unit that we would look to staff, and this would be some, this would be new, completely new, would be officers for community engagement patrols. You've heard me talk about the ability to get officers not directly and always tied to 911 calls, but able to go and just patrol areas, be in neighborhoods, parks, address problem issues, be at community events, just really be engaged with what is going on in the community, kind of that old friendly B-cop that we used, that we hope to get back to that has been out there for years. We would assign these, these would be patrol officers, as would all the others, by the way, except for the detectives, and they would be part of a shift, they could respond to calls, but their focus would be on community-based patrols and attending events on behalf of the city. The ask for this would be two officers, one for each side of our patrol division. The added police officers is going to put demands on other parts of the critical infrastructure for public safety, as Tammy alluded to. One of the things we see needing an immediate assistance is going to be a corrections officers, and we would be asking to add one corrections officer to deal with the increased workload that we anticipate coming from the other positions. With all these positions, you, many of you have worked with our commanders, they do a wonderful job, and you know that they drive results and outcomes for the work we do. They are on point for responding to issues with these additional units and the current workload tasked to our commanders. We would be asking to have a commander added to deal with these additional units and the additional workload. It is imperative to ensure we're delivering these services in a safe, accountable, and effective way. That is the role of our commanders. So the ask would be one commander. And then in addition to that, because we know we'll have impact in other parts of the public safety realm, the criminal justice system, we have contemplated needs in our prosecutor's office, court clerk, and potentially city clerk. Those are not fine numbers. Probably the strongest one we would be looking at is one full-time prosecutor. We can see the immediate need there, and a half court clerk with some flexibility, as with all this planned, flexibility for modification as needed. Again, these are initial considerations, no finals, and just to recap, if you weren't writing down the numbers, the number is 10 sworn police officers, one corrections officers, and some are from 2 to 2.5 public safety support personnel. So that's what we are looking at, and I'll take questions, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Tammy, this resolution, how soon, if it will come to us for discussion, how soon will it be?
For the ordinance?
Yeah.
To come back for the tax? So we are planning to meet next week, actually, to talk about, if this were to pass tonight, meeting next week to kind of lay out sort of a plan. We have to get together documentation to submit over to CJTC. Once we send it to CJTC, they have 45 days in order to act or advise us of deficiencies. Once they advise us of those deficiencies, you can adopt the ordinance at that time on the promise that we're going to meet and correct any deficiencies that they identify, and then there's sort of a back-and-forth process that the bill provides for for that.
And I trust the chief, big fan of his, and when we write this resolution, I mean, the chief very thorough on how he broke this out, on what it could go to, and I definitely support it. But when we write the resolution, do we have to spell those things out, or can we be very broad in a resolution to talk about public safety? Because we don't know what we don't know yet, right? So I don't know, when we write this resolution, do they have to be very X, Y, Z type of thing, or just...
I think you have options. My recommendation to you, though, would be that you limit it just to what the bill requires, which is to the criminal justice purposes, because our needs may change over time.
Yeah.
And so that then gives you the flexibility. You're still limited by the bounds of the bill. You can't use it for a purpose other than what the state legislation says. So my recommendation to you would be to limit it only to the criminal justice purposes. And then, you know, as the revenue comes in and finance is able to assess sort of what money there is to fund, then those other decisions could be made by council, which would still come through the budget process.
Okay. And I'd support you 200%. It's just that there's so much stuff that goes on, and I didn't want to get locked in on things that we don't know just yet, and that's what I was saying, so please don't take that the wrong way, sir.
Understood.
Yeah, and this is just one piece of it. So again, this would just be like the funding mechanism where you authorize the tax to be imposed, but you still maintain all of your budgetary authority that you have on approving positions and the budget and how it's spent.
Thanks, Tammy.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Troutner, followed by Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief. You called this a proposal, and I think that's a really great word. I also think of it as like a plan, because we can make changes to it as we figure some of these things out. One of the things that I think we just need to be really clear about is, I think you said it would give us 10 officers. It's not going to fix our problem, and I just want to, I know it will make a difference, but I just don't want to be too misleading to where our community thinks that we're, you know, fixing a situation that we're in where we need more officers. So I think it's a good start, but I still think we have ways, a ways to go. Thank you.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Troutner. I have a question for Paula, but while Paula's coming up here, Chief, I want to ask about our, is our traffic unit fully staffed again?
It is, not that it's staffed to the degree we'd like to see it, but right now, we have, I think we have a vacancy that was created by a promotion, but the units are funded, which is the point of your question. And so, yeah, we have the funding for six plus one, and we added the dedicated DUI officer to the grant program.
Okay, and then we would be able later on to have further discussions about this breakdown? We don't need, like, we don't need to get in the weeds about that right now, right?
That would be your discretion.
Okay. Paula, I'm wondering about how much, I know it fluctuates, about how much is 0.1% sales tax?
Okay, if we had enacted this tax to be effective January 1, 2024, we would have generated $3.88 million. We do know that our sales tax dollars are declining right now. In fact, we saw May drop quite a bit during this, the month of May. So our estimates are a little bit lower than what we received in 2024, but that'll at least give you a ballpark. You're welcome.
And one employee is roughly what, Paula?
Paula, we've got a follow-up.
I'm so sorry. So one employee equal to about total benefits and compensation is about what?
Oh, and of course, I didn't bring that number with me, it's on my computer. So I'm going to say, one of the things you have to think about is with one employee, it's not just the salaries and benefits, but also the vehicle, and so you're exceeding that $200,000 mark per employee to be able to get all of what they need, not only the vehicle, but all their equipment that they need as well.
Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, my questions sort of have been asked already, but I want to reiterate that, you know, we, public safety is something that comes up in every conversation with all of our small businesses and our residents and every individual, and I don't like the idea of increasing sales tax, but it's the tool we have, and part of the conversations we had with all of our residents and especially our business owners were impacted, they're willing to pay the extra penny on a purchase to ensure that we have enough, not enough, I guess, more resources than what we currently have to support our community. So, and as this is a proposal, I like, I would want to revisit the numbers, obviously, to look at exactly kind of going to, how much it's going to cost and what are our options and how it's most beneficial to our community, looking at that, but I would be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions for the chief or for Tammy? All right. With that, then, a motion would be in order for the resolution.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2092, authorizing the mayor to take all necessary, all steps necessary to prepare an ordinance for council consideration that imposes a sales tax of 1/10 of 1%, as authorized by engrossed substitute House Bill 2015, adopted by the state legislator on April 22, 2025, and effective July 27, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 7-0. Council, I want to say thank you for taking this next step in recognizing what I know that we have all been hearing from the community for years now, that this is their number-one priority. Councilmember Boyce, I very much appreciate your thoughts on this. I, I think, so there's requirements by, by the grant program and by the legislation in this House bill, but this council does have a strong history of implementing things and making a commitment on where that funding goes and have always lived up to that, whether it be school zone cameras, back when you and I were on council, we talked about that that was going for public safety services, red light cameras, going for body cameras. So I, that would be in, as we now go forward and prepare the next steps to bring back to you all for consideration, that will be where, where I will be coming from, is that this, the commitment is that this is about police staffing and the, and the necessary support services around that. Obviously, you will have the decision to, to say thumbs up or thumbs down to that, make the changes that you were, that you were looking for, but that's the place that will be coming back to you as we, as we move through the next steps of this, unfortunately, really complicated process. There's a lot of pieces of this that aren't, that don't exist still, there's some training requirements and some policy, and, and again, putting a grant before the, the ability to maintain that is, is going to be a challenge, but this step that you have taken tonight allows us to, to move forward with that. So I just want to say thank you very, very much. Councilmember Fincher.
I started not to say anything because this is just the, looking at the information, but then I thought, for all transparency, as the chief knows, and as you guys know, I support getting more officers, but I hate the idea, even though it's 1/10 of a percent from us, we know there's going to be other amounts added from other entities. We hear from a lot of people that they can afford it, but I know that there are people out there, people who come to my door at my day job, who cannot afford that extra 1/10 of 1%. I don't have another answer, so I do want to see what, what is going to be put before us. I do understand about using our tools, but just for transparency, I wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to the last item on our agenda, and it is bids. Joining us tonight is our Public Works Director Chad Baron, and we've got the State Route 167 median drainage at South 224th Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a project, it's a follow-on project to our 224th Street extension. We opened this bridge back in 2019, everybody, I think most folks in the council, or on the council back then, we opened a bridge. And if you can see in this picture, right in the middle of the freeway there, we drilled three piers down into the freeway. That's also a very flat area of the freeway, and we knew there was a chance, and the chance happened, where we actually pushed the freeway down just a little bit. So if you, if you're out there on a very rainy day, the water starts to accumulate right there underneath our bridge piers. We need to go back in there as part of our permit conditions and, and repair that. So we'll go in, add some slotted drains between the northbound, southbound lanes so we can move water through, and then hook a catch basin in there to take the water off of the freeway and then repave a portion of the HOV lanes. So that's work that we thought could happen, it's been budgeted as part of the, the overall project, and we're back to get that fixed done and then close out the permit. So we advertised for bids, took two bids. Low bid was from Scarsella Brothers for just about $458,000 and change on an engineer's estimate of $453,000, and we recommend award.
All right. Council, any questions for Chad? All right. Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the State that SR 167 median drainage at South 224th Street project to Scarsella Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $458,581, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the City Attorney and Public Works Director.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Chad. All right. We do not have an executive session this evening, so that brings us down to the bottom of our agenda. I want to say thank you, everyone, for the, the conversation tonight, the hard work that you all are doing as city council members, and thank you for everyone that joined us this evening. And with that, we are adjourned.